Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabad House of Delmar, together with my co-host, Mark Ornich, at statewide news service, JbizTechFailing.com. And as you can see here, now columnist for the Jewish Press.
Right, I'm having fun doing all of that. And my column is called Albany Beat, and I talk about how government relates to the Jewish community, or doesn't, as the case may be. But speaking of government, we're very honored today to have with us the council president of the Schenectady City Council, Lisa Perazzo.
Yeah.
So please, welcome to The Jewish View, Lisa, and it's so, I'm so happy to have you here.
Thank you, and the pleasure and honor is all mine, really. Thank you for inviting me.
You know, I don't know if it's condolences or congratulations, but you started this year in 2016. Your predecessor didn't decide not to run for reelection, and somehow you battled it out with Ed Cozier, and you were victorious. So, kudos to you.
You know, I'm not from Schenectady, but I guess, I don't know, tell me if I'm right, Schenectady has so many problems. I don't know, that's what you hear on the radio, that's all I'm saying, I want you to tune me up over here.
Well, if you heard about all the good stuff, you wouldn't listen.
It's so interesting, because it's a stigma that we really fight. I mean, I don't think you hear any stories about Schenectady that you don't hear about Troy, or about Albany, or whatever the case may be.
Any urban area. Cohoes, even, yeah.
Right, and quite on the opposite, we have so many wonderful things, and so, such incredible growth going on. I mean, we have, you know, Metroplex and the city and the county working together, we've changed the face of our downtown, and now we're really working very diligently in our neighborhoods.
Yeah, but this is your place for selfless promotion here, because you're the director of special events at Proctors.
Absolutely.
So, Proctors was the center of the growth of the downtown.
Absolutely.
So, you know, this is selfless.
We had guaranteed customers coming in, right?
That's right.
I mean, that's what helped. But we also have a heck of a unified economic development team that knows how to grow our city right.
No, no doubt, and the fact that, you know, it's funny, because there's a book called From Good to Great, and talks about having the right people, and the right bus, and the right time, and the right seats, you know. And I think that sort of came together over a 10-year period, where everyone is now melding and meshing together, and working well together. And, because you couldn't do something like have a casino in Schenectady if that wasn't, if that wasn't the case. You know, if people were fighting, and, you know, the state leaders and others saw that there was, there wasn't harmony, you know, there wouldn't be a casino, there wouldn't be something that grand the scale, so.
Talk about the casino, because again, you know, I just, I mean, I want you to fill this in, because you know, you hear the plus and the minus. Plus, oh, there's gonna be a boom for money, and the minus is, you know, you hear, oh, there's gonna be crime, and, you know, it's not gonna help the wider community of Schenectady. Maybe the owner will get a lot of money, but maybe the stores around there, like even a half mile away, people just come in and leave, and the rest of Schenectady will not feel the boom of the casino.
Well, I think those situations exist, but I think with this casino operator, they've proven that they're very much a part of the community, and that was something that was really important to our application, and I think ended up weighting things in our favor. They're tried and true, they are community partners, and they're going to bring a ton of jobs into our area. They, you know, hire within, and...
And who is this that you're talking about?
This is Rush Street Gaming.
Okay.
Yep, so, and they own the Sugar House in Pittsfield, they, or Pittsburgh, excuse me, they have various riverfront properties, so their model is really being kind of copied over into Schenectady, that's been a very successful model.
Do they have successful riverfront?
Yeah.
Okay. Because you just said they had riverfront properties, but I didn't know what...
All of their properties are successful, and, and not only just successful as a business, but they've won awards as good employers, and, you know, they really have a proven track record. I can tell you, from Proctors' standpoint of view, that they've been very interested in talking to Proctors about programming at the casino, how they can work to bring people to Proctors, and also, you know, have them enjoy the casino, and, you know, bridge with various downtown restaurants and things like that. So I don't think they're necessarily looking to bring people onto their property and just, you know, lock them into that one area. Now, as far as the boom to the city goes, whether the businesses are close or far, we already had $3.5 million of unpredicted revenue injected into this year, from their mortgage tax, and then also from them getting their casino license. And then it's purported that we'll be, have about 4.1 million every single year to the city, as well as the county, and then there's also a chunk that goes to the school district. So, whether you support the casino, you don't support the casino, you're comfortable with it, you're not comfortable with it, it's going to change the face of our tax base. They're paying full property taxes, it's going to make a difference in our budget, and our taxpayers need some tax relief, so I'm really excited about that.
But it's more than just tax relief, because you can have, you know, you still have to go into Hamilton Hill, and some of the Vale community, and all the others, and some of the others that's, you know, have blight, and every urban area has blight.
Yeah.
It seems like if you clean up one part, it moves to another. But aside from that, you know, you still gotta go in and make, and spiff up the downtrodden areas. So, you know, you're gonna have a huge boost to the tax base, I hope that you'll use it for, you know, cleaning up, and not just lowering, or removing, or eliminating the tax base, you know.
Yep, and we've already started. You know, we have a land bank, which we're very, very grateful for.
That Steve Strickman heads up?
Yeah, well, yes, Rich Russo is actually the chairman of the land bank, but Steve is the city...
Is the executive director?
The city personnel that oversees it. But we've won one of the largest awards, the largest award in the state, from Attorney General Schneiderman, to remove blight in our neighborhoods, which we've been working very, very diligently at. We're really working on cleaning up the Eastern Avenue corridor, and now working into Hamilton Hill. We have, we just broke ground for the DePaul apartments on Albany Street, where we moved a bevy of blighted buildings, and put up clean, new, beautiful apartments. Within the last two months, we celebrated the opening of the Phyllis Bourne Library Literacy Center on Albany Street, right next to that is a brand-new Family Dollar. A little bit mixed reviews on having a Family Dollar there, but it's a clean, convenient store for the neighborhood people to go to.
I go to Family Dollar, I don't know what's the problem is, I mean, you know, you don't have to think about the price.
Not at all, yeah.
No, you don't have to think about the price, you know, everything's a dollar, you know.
So we're working, you know, we're, we're working, and, you know, it's not all about government. Our neighborhood associations work very, very hard from within their neighborhood, because we can't do everything on our own. We need committed citizens in our neighborhoods also, and we're very lucky. You know, our Bellevue Neighborhood Association, our Goose Hill, our Mount Pleasant, our Hamilton Hill, all very engaged.
Now, you live in Bellevue section, right?
I do.
Okay, I got that right, okay.
I actually grew up on Prospect Street, off of Eastern Avenue, right in like the, like behind Myscive area. My family owned the home for a long, long time.
Yeah.
A long, long time, they just, we sold it when, when I got married. My husband had kids in the Clifton Park School District, so.
Shuneh de Hawa.
Yes, I say it's one of the two times I was ripped away from the city against my will. I've really always, just always wanted to be in Schenectady, I'm very endeared to the city.
Attached, yeah.
Yeah, I am.
That's how I feel about Brooklyn, where I grew up.
You're here for 30 years.
I am, but I'm, I can't, I always go back.
It's a special place in your heart.
It really is. So, you know, you are a cheerleader, in more ways than one. I mean, you're, you're perfect for being this council president, because your personality and everything, you were with the Chamber, Schenectady Chamber, for four years, almost five years. I mean, and then you were with Mizone and Glenn Sanders Mansion. You're always with these very positive types of companies, or enterprises.
Yeah, I, well, I try to be a positive person, sometimes the world's events weigh you down a little bit, but, you know, it's funny, because I was cheerleading for Schenectady in the 90s, when we were saying, listen, come and stay here, it's really inexpensive, then go to Cooperstown, or come and stay here, go to Saratoga. We were kind of positioning ourselves as a hub and spoke.
Yeah.
Stop-off for people, because honestly, we didn't have anything people wanted to come to Schenectady for, tourism-wise, you know, and look where we've come. Now, it's just come to Schenectady, because it's really great.
Aside from Gary McCarthy, because you've seen a lot of mayors over your time, who, and I, you know, don't want to put you in the bad position, it's like choosing your favorite child, but who do you think had been the best mayor over the years, besides the current mayor?
Well, I don't want to say who the best mayor was necessarily, but...
Effective mayor, whatever.
I will say it's very easy for me to answer that question, and that Karen Johnson holds a very...
Oh, well, she's also a Proctor.
Dear, well, no, it has nothing to do with that, we actually have almost nothing to do with each other in our normal workday, but, you know, as a groundbreaking leader, as the first woman mayor, and, to be honest, that was a very difficult time for Democrats. Republicans really had more of, you know, a stronghold, and, and she was one of the team that broke through that, and also showed great leadership to the city, and I admire her.
Well, you had Al Drazinski, you had Frank Ducey for many years, I mean...
All worked hard, listen, it is a thankless job, there is no doubt about that. It's a lot of hard work, it's a lot of, you know, getting up in the middle of the night and going to a fire, and, you know, I think, you know, all of the crazy schedule that Gary has, you know, even as a councilperson, it's, it's very challenging. It's technically a part-time job, and really, it's, I, you know, I have two full-time jobs. It's nights, days, weekends, you know.
So, tell us about Proctors, and your role at Proctors as director of special events, because there are so many special events that go on there. Every event is special, it's not special.
That's right. Well, I do something a little different. What my job is, is to bring in people that wouldn't necessarily match our normal show demographic. I mean, we know pretty much that we appeal to women between the ages of 35 and 60, you know, and that's our strong core demographic. So, my events try to get younger people, people from outside the area, into Proctors to get to know Proctors. We have a wine festival, we have...
The farmer's market, and...
Well, that, that's the Schenectady Green Market.
No, but you still get them in.
Yes.
You still draw them in, and then you could show them the rest of the place. I mean, at least, it's a magnet.
But they're, they're on their own, I'm actually on the board of the Schenectady Green Market.
But aren't they in the basement?
They just, yes, but they just lease our building.
Right.
They aren't affiliated.
No, but it's a way to, I mean, they could be leased, or they could be on J Street, and, and then they wouldn't be, you wouldn't have the people coming into the, into the building.
And it helps them too, because, you know, when we have big show, it just floods the market with all sorts of new customers, so.
Right, and then you, then you buy the food there, and then you see the signs, there's no food or drink, and coming into the theater.
Wow, you can't drink food and drink in the theater. Mr. Morris, our CEO, says he likes to position us as the community's living room.
Yes.
And he does, we do a lot of, you know, very inexpensive things, expensive movies, family events, free lectures, we always play the, you know, the big game, the big football game for free on our, our screen, and the Tonys on our screen, and if there's any big, you know, political debates or whatever, we'll play it on the, on the GE screen, so people can come in, and they can, they can watch, and have that sense of community that we were chatting about before.
Yeah, that's great, and then you got, what, the Parker Hotel next door?
Parker Inn is next door.
Parker Inn.
Yes, yep.
And then you got all those other, what's going on with Quirky? Are they still in?
Quirky, no, Quirky has left the building.
Like Elvis. Did they take their sign down from the top?
Yes.
Oh, they did, so they're gone.
We actually have a really cool collaborative workspace up there now.
Yeah.
So we have several different companies that are up in that workspace, using it as like kind of a, I don't want to call it an incubator, but it's a collaborative workspace now, so it's, it's nice.
Yeah, because it's huge, I mean, that works, I've been up there a couple of times, but they were, it was a huge air operation, or at least space for their operation.
Yeah.
So what is, what do you see as the most challenging part for Schenectady, that you have on the city council, that you have to deal with? Is it the crime, is it drugs, is it, what's the most, we know what the most inspiring thing for you, is it's the entertainment, it's the lifestyle, it's the quality of life, but on the other side of the coin?
For me, it's definitely our young people dying, whether it be from drug abuse, which is growing so quickly across our nation, it's terrifying. I've been in a bunch of, you know, kind of community group task force things, the statistics are just mind-blowing, to be honest with you. And also, you know, we have young people killing other young people, over, sometimes drugs, sometimes personal vendetta, whatever the case may be. I feel very helpless about those things. I continue to expose myself to discussion, hoping that some sort of an idea will spark, but I think the community in general feels helpless over those things. I think, you know, front-loading it with positive experience for our youth may catch up and help at some point, but there's poverty involved, there's hunger involved, there's so many things involved, and those things weigh on me, because I don't have answers, you know, I don't have answers, and I think when you're an elected official, people look to you for answers.
Absolutely.
And there is no magic answer here, and so I think just continuing that conversation, being present, and being involved.
And not brushing it under the rug, and not...
And being exposed, yeah, is a really important thing.
What about, what's the situation going on with getting a new police chief? I know, I know you have the commissioner, Wayne Bennett, but what's going on with the police chief?
Well, we had, the test was given, and it's literally months for the results of the test to come back. And the test was supposed to be, the results were supposed to be back in like this time period, now they're saying, no, it'll be another month, or whatever. And then, out of those top three test results, you know, the mayor will choose a new police chief.
So how many people took the test?
I'm getting anxious. You know, I don't know, I know we had people from outside the area take the test, I know we had several people within the, the police force take the test, but I don't know the exact total, I don't think it was huge, I think it was like seven, eight, nine, somewhere around there, so.
Is that...
But, you know, those are the best people, too, I mean, I know that the people from, you know, within the force that took the test, we'd be lucky to have any of them, so, you know, I'm, I'm ready, especially Commissioner Bennett's doing a great job, but I'm, I'm ready to, you know, have a new police chief, and...
Now, why does, why is there a need for a chief and a commissioner? I know that the Public Safety Commissioner also takes over through, under his umbrella, EMS, and fire, and police, and all that, but, but I don't see that in other cities, why is that needed in Schenectady?
Yep, well, one of the main reasons was so that we could bypass the process for, so that we could solve our own police problems internally, the commissioner has jurisdiction to make those choices, or impose, the words eluding me right now, but impose...
Sanctions?
Well, no, but if there's a police issue, instead of going through the whole union procedure and all of that, the commissioner can actually say, you know, we're going to fire you, we're going to put you on probation, we're going to...
So he's like a one-man internal affairs bureau?
More or less, yeah, but the, the state has changed that now, and it's in flux. But, going back to why we need a commissioner, I think we're in a perfect situation right now, to show why it's good to have a commissioner, right? Because when our police chief left, we have good leadership at our police department, without having to scramble to...
But isn't, isn't the normal thing, like we did in Albany, when Steve Crokov left, that they appointed an interim, and it was usually the deputy?
Yeah.
Why didn't the deputy step up and become an interim police chief?
Well, I think the mayor didn't appoint a police chief, because we have a commissioner.
But, still, that doesn't, that's no excuse, because, I mean...
Well, but the commissioner can act as the police chief.
Yeah, but why not just, I mean, maybe the deputy, the first deputy chief wanted to take the exam to be the chief?
That you would have to ask Mayor McCarthy.
Okay.
That's his...
It's above your pay grade?
That's, well, no, he handles the staff, I mean, we set the budget, he has to live within the budget, but he does the hiring and firing.
Is it because of you saving some money on not have, on having that salary blank?
I do not know his rationale, I'm just glad we have a commissioner.
You don't ask? Okay, because I would think that you would have inquired, or whatever, but...
I think you should invite Mayor McCarthy.
I have been, I've been trying, but like you said, he's a very busy man these days.
You know, a lot of the, I've been trying to equate, and I see a lot of parallels between Albany, Troy, and Schenectady, I mean, it's, I don't know if you call them sister cities, to me, they're all three, like three corners of a triangle. One of the problems they always say in Albany is there's so many non-for-profits, that the tax base is so low, but I just know there's union, I'm just thinking, Mark, you know...
Chabad.
Well, Chabad's one small...
It's still a taxicentro, a lot of churches.
I mean, yeah, so...
Ellis, Ellis Hospital.
Yeah, the hospital, you got union right in the middle of everything.
How much, like Albany has like 70% of its property is tax exempt, what's the percentage of...
You know, I don't know what the percentage is in Schenectady.
Okay.
I don't, I'm sorry.
So, going back to what, what you were saying...
Significant amount, yeah.
Your chair of government operations, isn't the police department something that would fall under government operations?
We, no, public safety.
All right, and you're also on the public safety committee?
I'm on the public safety committee, but once again, we don't do anything, we have no impact on staff.
But you could, but you could question.
We have had discussions.
And?
The mayor chooses to go in this direction.
Okay, but does he say why, or he just says, seem more dictatory, it sounds like he's dictatory.
He's prerogative to make that choice.
Okay, well, gotcha, okay, I mean, it just seems like he should be, you know, held, well, how many, there's only one Republican, isn't there, in the...
Uh, no, Mr. Riggy is not affiliated with a party.
Okay, so there's no Republicans?
He's been endorsed by the Republican Party, but he's not a member of the Republican Party.
He's a blank, okay, so, everyone else is Democrat?
Yes.
So you've got an old Democrat council, and you've got a Democrat mayor, sounds like the city of Albany. There's gotta be checks and balances, don't you think it's healthy to have a two-party?
You know, yes, absolutely, but candidates run, and the voters decide, right? I mean, it's not that the Republican Party hasn't put up candidates, we had a full slate, we had eight people running for four seats. So the candidates are there, but I think that the Democratic leadership has been very positive in the city, and people are re-electing, and electing new Democrats also. At the local level, I have to say that I don't think it's quite the same as when you get up into the upper levels. Most of the people are, well, I...
No, you're right, it's a personality contest.
Right, all of the people on the council do this because they love their community, and they want to move the city in a forward direction. I mean, we get paid $14,000 a year, so nobody's doing it for the fame or the fortune. I can tell you, of the personalities on the council, it is very common that we do not agree. So, just because we're all Democrats, doesn't mean one person brings up a topic, and everybody goes, oh, yes, yes, you're a good Democrat, yes, absolutely, we'll go along with you. We sit and we debate, and sometimes it's not even so pretty.
Yeah, but you know, but, but when I get an answer back that says, oh, well, that's just the direction he chose, and that's, and you leave it at that, and you don't press him to, to be accountable, to say, this is why, and you don't have him answer the why question, I think that's something that needs to be brought up, and I just...
Well, I think, in some ways, I did answer it for you, we have a commissioner of public safety, who's been acting as a leader, who was a leader in the state treatment for many years.
No, but if you didn't have, but if you didn't have a commissioner, you would be able to have the deputy step in as an interim police chief?
Right, except we do have a commissioner.
Okay, but...
And I'm really comfortable with Commissioner Bennett's leadership, and we have discussed it with Mayor McCarthy, and this is the direction he wants to take, and, you know, he chose not to appoint an interim chief. I think what he wants to do is find out, instead of appointing an interim chief, and then knocking that person out of the seat, if they don't end up in the top three, you know, test results.
Hence the word, hence the word interim.
Right, exactly, I mean, I think Commissioner Bennett is a great, a great, you know, result.
What else do you see?
And we also push back on the mayor, let me tell you that, too.
Okay, all right, what else do you see happening in the, with, with this new influx of income, of tax revenue coming in? What else do you see as a need of, what could this be used for, besides lowering property taxes?
Yep, certainly, I'll reiterate, that's gonna be our first stop.
Yes.
You know, we need to give our property payers some relief, even my own personal self.
Right.
But I think we also need to look at the fact that we have very aging infrastructure.
Yes.
And we have to start to really look at what happens there, and how we go forward in a safe, productive manner.
Yes, but all that gets bonded, and that doesn't mean, that's like a 30-year bond, and it doesn't mean that you don't necessarily need the money now, but it's nothing that you pay cash for right off the bat.
Right, but we do have to pay the bonds back.
That's right.
So, I mean, I think we need to look at a long-term basis for this.
Okay, but short-term, what, besides the infrastructure, like water pipes, and the, and paving, and the, you know, the other things that you need in the city to keep it operational and running, what do you see is moving forward, the city to use that tax money for?
Yep, and I would also like to be more aggressive with paying down our debt, making sure we're not amortizing our pension payment, you know, payment plans, which we've been really good about in the last couple of years, but to produce, we have our sights set on a 10% tax reduction, so, and that's $3 million, so, you know.
Okay, and what about the, you just said about the debt service, and reducing that, how, what's the percentage, what's your debt, how far, what's your debt now, as opposed to the ceiling of how much you can borrow?
I would have to talk to the commissioner.
You don't know yet, okay, because you're the, you're on the finance, you're chair of the finance, so I thought you might have that, okay.
Yes, no, not off the top of my head.
Okay, because I know in Albany, it's pretty high, and, you know, they have to do a lot of debt reduction also.
Yeah, I think we are, I think all municipalities do.
You know, Albany, they're just, they have a built-in $18 million deficit, you know, that's, the mayor keeps, you know, borrowing money to pay the bills.
What is the budget?
And we've been building, we've been building our general fund.
What is the budget for Schenectady?
The total budget? You ask me these questions?
Is that right? Well, I mean, because we do have, like, you say, Albany.
Approximately, give or take, is it...
You know, I don't, I would have to go back into the budget and get you the number, I apologize.
Is it 100 million, 50 million?
I can't even answer that for you right now.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. So how are things going with Proctors, and how are things going along there?
Proctors is a very exciting place, it's not, I mean, it's just a wonderful place, it brings tons of people...
But it's being built up, more people are coming since I...
Not just that, but the performances.
I've been five years now, so, I can tell you that we're hitting our financial targets for all of our Broadway shows, which is a wonderful thing, actually, this past show, we missed our target by $371, which is six tickets, but we're okay with that. So, you know, I think we're programming smart, I think there are shows that we go into, knowing that we're going to lose money, because we want well-rounded program.
Was that the Lion, was that the Lion King?
No, our last was Once.
Once, oh, Once.
It was just here for a week, no, we...
How about Lion King?
We not only surpassed our target for Lion King, we surpassed Disney's target for us for Lion King.
Oh, wow.
So we were in excess of $5 million in sales.
Nozzle-tub.
Now, the beautiful part of that, that nobody knows, is we make about $6 and change a ticket.
Right.
So, Proctors doesn't make any, you know, they think we're this big, you know, entity making tons of money, and we're just, we're nonprofit, providing the arts, you know, we have the same struggles any other nonprofit providing the arts does.
But it is growing, and it, you know, gets with more and more programs.
Yes.
Do you get a stipend for being city council president?
No.
So it's the same, whether you rank and file, or whether you get all that extra work, and you don't get a little bit more for the...
Nope.
Wow, why would you want...
Just extra fame.
Why would you want to be council president then?
I felt like in my first four years, first of all, I have the longest tenure on the council right now.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that. How long is that?
Secondly, this is my fifth, I'm starting my fifth year.
And so it's ten years or twenty years?
No, 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 four years.
Five? Oh, you're starting your fi, fifth year?
I'm starting my first year of my second, yeah.
Term?
Term, yep.
Okay, so it's, I'm sorry, I heard five terms, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
Okay, fifth year. And that's the longest?
I wouldn't look young for my age if that was my concern. No, yeah, five years. I'm, I actually have the highest seniority on the council right now. And I worked really hard and I wanted to learn new things and I wanted to, you know, there's just things that you're involved in when you're the president of the council that you're not necessarily involved in when you're just a council member. And I wanted to help set the course over the next, you know, couple of years. And, you know, it's a two-year term as presidency, we'll see what happens at the end of the two-year term.
Well, what was happening five years ago, that you got your job at Proctors, you got elected to the city council? Five years ago was a huge year for you.
Um, well, actually, no. This is the ninth year of my twelve-year plan to become the mayor of Schenectady. Now, when I put this plan together, my husband and I had just separated and I was headed back to Schenectady because that's really where I wanted to be. And I would tell everybody I met, I have a twelve-year plan to become the mayor of Schenectady. And I wasn't even involved in politics at the time, never had been. And they said, really, that's interesting, where do you live in the city? And I'm like, I live in Clifton Park. They're like, you need to live in the city. I said, I'm fully aware of that. So in my first four years, I bought a house. I started telling everybody my plan until the Democratic Party came to me and said, we'd like you to be a committee person. And I said, that sounds great to me, how do I get involved? And so I started learning more and at the end of that four years, I ran for my first term as city council and won. And then, and there was nine people that ran that year for four seats. And then here I am in my second term and I, again, I thought the presidency would bring new perspective for me and teach me new things and.
And not just that, it brings you one step closer to the mayor's seat.
Yes, but I always am very, very specific in saying that, you know, Gary's doing a great job. I have no interest in trying to unseat Gary or anything, lots of things happen. But I think it's good to have goals in life, right?
But what's the line, what's the line of succession?
There is no line of succession.
Oh, okay, it's not like the, because in Albany, the common council president becomes the mayor when the mayor retires or resigns or dies in office or whatever.
If Gary were to leave office as council president, I have the option to hold that office temporarily until an election, you know, a special election came up, which was what happened. Brian Stratton actually left and Gary stepped in. But I don't anticipate that, you know, to happen. And when Gary's done running, there's no, I mean, maybe the Democratic Party wouldn't even want to run me as the mayor and, you know, I'd have to deal with that.
Who wouldn't want to have you at least running for mayor, come on?
When I, you know, when I cross that path.
You'd be the cheerleader in charge for sure.
Well, so there's a lot more to it than that, but it's good to have a goal and it's good to work toward a goal.
Well, Lisa, we're out of time, but, you know, we wish you a lot of success. You're going along your goal and hopefully you'll reach that goal. And you're a good person, we see, like Mark was saying, cheerleader and doing success for Schenectady. You're going along with the, you're going up with the Schenectady success. So keep going with success and do it with good health.
Yes, continued success, absolutely. Thank you for coming on.